Evening, welcome to City of Lincoln City, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 14th, 2018, 5:30 PM. This is a special meeting of Lincoln City City Council. We're going to be here, take roll, and then we're going to adjourn to begin a tour of the city for our properties, correct? So, roll call please.
Don Williams?
Here.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Riley Hoagland?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Judy Casper?
Here.
And Susan Walkie.
Here.
Here.
Sorry. Uh-oh.
I'm sorry. What else you need?
I'll just give a quick introduction, just so folks know what we're doing this evening. So, we're here to provide some information to City Council for whether or not to use an economic development tool in creating a new urban renewal area. So, the objective of the meeting this evening is to provide you with a mobile tour of the possible new urban renewal districts or areas, and then return to City Hall Council Chambers for review on the process, timeline, and cost to form new districts, answer any questions you may have about the possible new urban renewal areas, and then determine staff direction. We do have our consultant here, Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting, so she has definitely helped us in the past with our urban renewal plan and has a lot of experience with other jurisdictions. Just a quick background, July of 2017, we held a joint work session to broadly hear from staff and discuss economic development topics. And at that meeting, the council requested to have staff bring back more in-depth information on the process and timeline to create a new district or area, as it's sometimes referred to. And then September of that year, 2017, we had more discussion to request what sorts of areas we might look at with using urban renewal as a tool. And then March of 2018, just a few months ago, we provided more information and talked a little bit in detail, and you all felt as though you would benefit from having a mobile tour. So, we could kind of tour through the areas and then come back and have discussion. It would be fresh in your minds. So, that's what we'll go ahead and do now, and you should have clipboards with the existing district, because one of the options is to recreate a new district using some of the existing district, but that district would have to go away before creating a new one. But the area, once this one goes away, there will be other options in terms of, you know, let's say Ocean Lake, or Taft, or Wacoma, any of the areas of town could be recreated as a new district. So, that's the reason why you've got the existing district. And then, when we get to the meeting site, I'll hand out the districts that we'll be touring from that meeting site, and on the back of each map, there should be an extra page. So, if you have any questions, you can jot down for each district, then when we come back, we'll be able to kind of go through them and talk about them in more detail.
And just for audience's sake, how long do you anticipate?
Yeah, so if we're running a tight ship, then we think we'll be back here about 7:00, and then we can start with having the discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We will, once we leave, lock this building, except the entrance, the lobby, which will be locked, but not the lobby itself, and I'll have a sign there that says we will reconvene at 7:00, in case anybody comes and want to participate.
So much. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Then we are...
Adjourn to the parking lot?
Adjourn to the parking lot.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Hello, hello, hello.
On record?
Mics are on.
On record?
All right, well, welcome back. We're back in session after a wonderful tour of our city. All yours, Allison.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So, we're back here to discuss a little bit more about urban renewal areas as an economic development tool. And just to recap, we took the mobile tour, and now we're here to talk about process, timeline, and cost to form new districts, and answer any of your questions that you have about the five areas that are possible to be formed, and then have any direction that you would like to provide. I'll go ahead and recap quickly on the background. July 24th of 2017, we had a joint work session with City Council and Urban Renewal Agency to broadly hear from staff and discuss economic development topics, one of which being urban renewal districts. On September 11th of 2017, we heard from Council that you wanted to have a little bit more information on urban renewal districts, what sorts of areas of town would be possible areas that could be used, urban renewal could be used as a funding tool to do some projects. And then March of this year, we had a little more information, and you all decided that we should do a mobile tour so that the parts of town that are under consideration could be fresh in your minds when you have your questions and make any decisions. So, what is urban renewal? Urban renewal is an economic development and funding tool available to cities and counties, and authorized by the State of Oregon laws, you'll hear often we refer to ORS, Chapter 457, that uses public investment to stimulate private investment. And its purpose is to help communities improve and redevelop areas which are deteriorated, unsafe, showing signs of economic or physical conditions that are detrimental to the community as a whole. In addition, these areas can have deteriorated streets and utilities, or the areas may lack streets and utilities altogether. Oregon was the second state to authorize urban renewal. And urban renewal provides three types of authority that are not otherwise available to local governments. First, it allows the use of tax increment financing to fund improvement projects, as you know that we've done with our existing district. Second, it allows for the special ability to buy and assemble property for development, and our existing district has done that as well. And we have eight properties, actually, sorry, the Urban Renewal Agency has four properties that we are currently working with developers to get some projects on the ground. And third, it allows for special flexibility in working with private parties to complete development projects. So, an example of that would be working with developers, or, for example, our facade improvement loan program that provides funding for private property owners to improve their buildings. Let's see, so our existing district was formed in 1988, and we will basically be paying off our last bond for that district we have up until the year 2024, but we will probably pay that off a few years early. I think 2021-ish is when we are anticipated to pay that bond off. So, just to go ahead and recap at the beginning here, this map on the projector shows that there are urban renewal areas across the state of Oregon, and quite a few, actually. So, I think City of Salem has seven, roughly seven, urban renewal areas or districts. Portland has over 20, and of course, we have one, a very long and skinny one, focused on the Highway 101 Commercial Corridor. And so, that's what we're talking about tonight if we want to start planning for doing another You also see here our goals and objectives with the Urban Renewal Agency, so lots of different objectives that we can enhance properties for business and tourist-related property to be developed, resolve blighted conditions, improve streets, do undergrounding projects, overhead utility undergrounding, encourage expansion and development of businesses, increase property values through redevelopment efforts, leverage the agency's financial resources. So, again, our loan program is a good example of that. And we've done also some installation of street furniture, pedestrian scale lighting, walking surfaces, and landscaping in areas to encourage more pedestrian activity. And on the screen, you'll see a map of our existing district, and again, it's mostly along Highway 101. It starts at the DMV intersection where West Devils Lake Road meets the highway, and then goes all the way down through Cutler City to the city limits there in the south. Are there any questions that people have about the existing district? We can do this in a couple ways. Elaine Howard is our consultant, she's here from Elaine Howard Consulting, and we can talk generally about urban renewal, if you have questions about how it works, and then we can also go through each of the possible areas with questions specifically to each district. It's completely up to you, Mayor and Council, how you'd like to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Did I hear you say that we wouldn't be creating a new district until this old one is done? And I guess my question is around the done. Is it the 221 paid off? Does that mean it's done, when all funds are, in essence...
Repaid.
Repaid, paid back? So, regardless of the '24 date, but if we paid it off early, then a new district could appear at that point?
Yes.
And I understand it's acreage and percentage and all that stuff, but in theory...
In theory, yes. Although, when Elaine was here last week, we went over what acreage we have now, which is in the existing district, and what acreage we basically have available to us to create a new district, and I think it's two...
Two eighty, two eighty-eight, about.
Two hundred eighty-eight acres is available now to form another district.
We also talked about the potential, if you wanted, on your existing district to free up more acreage, if you wanted to move ahead on more acreage in a different urban renewal area now. You can take out properties from your existing district that are tax-exempt properties. So, if you have parks or publicly owned land that's in your existing district, that you wanted to free up that acreage to create a new district, you could remove that acreage. You have existing bond covenants, so you would have to check to make sure that works. I have never had a problem removing tax-exempt properties from existing areas, because they don't care about that. We've also removed taxable property from urban renewal areas if you can show that you have an appropriate debt service coverage ratio for the bondholder. So, that's something that you have to get their specific approval to do, so it's something you could consider, so two other options to free up more acreage.
Mr. Mayor? So, how much, right now, how much potential tax-exempt acreage do we have that we could borrow from, let's say, or be able to use that acreage?
Yeah, right, so right now, we have the 288, but we haven't looked at how much we have that's tax-exempt that we could free up. We haven't done that yet.
Mr. Mayor? Isn't one of the other, I'm just thinking, contiguous seems to come in mind that...
It does, but you, I was telling your city manager and Allison when I was here last week, there are ways to get around that. I work a lot in the city of Wilsonville, and they use urban renewal to the full extent that they can, and their urban renewal areas are patchwork quilts.
Really?
And they pull them together through little streams of right-of-way. So, they will do what's called a cherry stem to attach one district, one area, to another area, to keep it contiguous, to match what's required by law, but you don't have to have all those parcels. And you don't have to have the full width of the right-of-way, you can have a portion of the right-of-way.
Well, I don't know exactly what it is I should ask at this point. It's a lot to take in. I've only jotted down one real question at this point, and that was when the, with the Nell Scott Southeast 23rd versus the Taft-Nell Scott Corridor Byway District. And my only question is, what difference would one make over the other?
Yeah, the Taft-Nell Scott Byway Corridor District is primarily a transportation route, so it's not looking to do any significant redevelopment other than the road. And we don't know how long that would take, you know, until we get into more feasibility studies to figure out how much acreage there is and how much assessed value there is, then it's hard to know how quickly a project like that could happen.
But I guess if we build a road through there, then that makes that more desirable to private development, I would assume, around it, if with the proper zoning or annexation.
Yes.
That could develop around it.
Well, except, remember, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but as I remember on the street, Allison had us think of bypass. Bypasses, to me, don't have ingress, egress, off, or access, off.
Oh, you're talking strictly bypass?
So, I mean that...
Yeah, it's a through route.
So, that wouldn't, but I like where you're going, and my question to add to the mayor's would be, why does it have to be that way? Why does that Nell Scott Gap just have to be a road, since it incorporates 23rd Street and the road, you know, kind of as we were talking at another council meeting when we were asked to approve the grant for the build grant? The idea, we understand that developers build roads, not cities, but since this is such a huge area undeveloped, you know, what a great partnership opportunity by having it all in an urban growth, urban renewal area, so that we could assist in some of those infrastructure means it would, I would think it would develop faster and more efficiently.
Yeah, so I don't want to get confused between the Foothills Boulevard, which is part of the Nell Scott Gap refinement plan, and the Taft-Nell Scott Corridor Byway. The byway is really just a road, and it's a very expensive, large, through road. I think the reason why those were kept separate is because that byway road could probably not be built in the same, it has to do with project cost, and in order to do that road, you'd probably need all of your assessed value in that area to fund only that road. Now, if the road is important, and 23rd Street is important, you could say that you'd like to explore, including the road, and then at some point, you would have a decision to make based on feasibility studies, and, you know, how much acreage do we have available, and how much would be needed in order to fund the improvements in that area of 23rd and the byway? It may or may not be possible, and it's kind of hard at this point, because it's cart and horse. And we're, you know, we're having this meeting based on a lot of information that has been over the years, and hasn't really been able to be fleshed out. So, it's hard to make a decision about if you want a concept to go forward without having all the information, but it's kind of cart and horse, and we don't have all that at this time. It would be, do you want to explore this, and if so, what are your priorities? Elaine, I know you've worked with cities before on how to set up priorities, do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Sure. Before you do that, could I ask a question? Just before you get there, so the Taft-Nell Scott Corridor Byway District potential, that's for freight traffic, I think you mentioned?
It's a through road, so freight traffic would probably prefer that, because it wouldn't have, as Mr. Anderson referenced, it's not going to have development around the sides, it's not going to have, you know, it's mostly large parcels that are back there, and not a lot of redevelopment potential.
So, my question is, is that an opportunity to partner with a variety of different large freight companies that would like to get through town a little faster? Would they help us?
I think they would be a stakeholder group, for sure. But in terms of funding, I haven't had experience if freight companies have ever funded local projects in order to get from point A to point B.
Thought I would ask, sorry, Elaine.
But you never know.
Okay, thank you.
So, and if you could help me visualize this, if we're talking about byway, then no off-ramps, it's just pretty much A to B, right?
Right.
Is this an elevated, and then how do you handle the cross?
It's not been designed or engineered, it's just a notion.
I understand that, but it would, seems to me it would have to be, because you're going to have existing roadways, and you want penetration back into that area to the east that couldn't just be blocked by a road. I mean, how do you...
Yeah, no, it would connect with Highway 101. It would just be like a loop, that wouldn't have crosswalks for pedestrians, it wouldn't have Main Street businesses, it would be a through route of a road.
Right, but what I'm saying, nothing could proceed from west to east through that, unless it went under it.
Well, there isn't anything out there.
Well, yeah, but...
Yeah.
It'd be your Dundee bypass, you know, think of that one.
Right.
And just...
Yeah, but it's elevated, and...
Yeah, yeah, because of the train, yeah.
I just want to picture this, and when I start talking to people out in the city about it, okay, here's what I'm thinking it is, and six other people, or five other people are going, well, this is what I think it is, and, oh, no. I'm just trying to flesh it out as best I can for the discussion purposes.
Mr. Mayor, so Allison, what I'm hearing, then, from my earlier statements, then if we move those statements to the first Nell Scott 23rd Industrial, and incorporated not just 23rd, but the Nell Scott Gap mapped area, that was, that we have a plan on now, I guess that, rather than, I had envisioned over here on the bypass, but I would move my statements over and say, let's expand 23rd Street, that you've labeled 23rd Street, and incorporate a larger area of urban renewal, in order to assist that whole area in development.
Yes.
Is what I'd like to put on the table.
I'd agree with that.
And we wouldn't know until we got into feasibility, if that is, as you might all remember, the urban renewal plan that we have now, which was formed in 1988, we were not able to accomplish all of those projects with the $43 million that we had over 35 years. So, it's good to have an ambitious plan, because you don't want to have money and no project direction, but at the same time, you also don't want to overpromise on your project list to the community, and then not be able to fulfill all of those expectations.
That's a good, good point.
It's the sweet spot, and it's not easy.
So, maybe that would be, you know, I'm still partial to 23rd Street, I started with 23rd Street. So, I could see that being one by itself, and then a new proposed district incorporating 23rd Street, and, you know, the whole Nell Scott mapped area. And for those reasons, I'm sitting here, after reading these, I'm not a big fan of just infrastructure sidewalks and curbs and stuff, know their value, but I think we've done that with this first district, and I think we need to show the citizens another look at a urban renewal area that can create seen, visible development. And 23rd Street has land available, needs, and it's a different type, light industrial. On our map, it's employment center, you know, planned, so it has lots of opportunities, and I think it'd be much, it's concentrated and much more visible to end results.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Don't we also have a master plan that was developed over several years with citizen input for that area?
Yes. The Planning Department did the Nell Scott Gap refinement plan, and urban renewal was identified as a possible funding mechanism for that plan. So, that plan would be, I think, a heavy influence if there were to be a district that formed here.
And hadn't some of the property owners shown an interest in such development?
Yes.
It just makes sense to me to develop that area back there, you know... You know, one of the things I think we talked about with the Nell Scott Gap is, you know, it's fine to build commercial spaces and fine to build residential above them or around them, but you have to have people to occupy these things. And unless our population's going to grow for some particular reason, which would be, hey, there's light industrial work back here, we can hire 20, 30, 40 people at each one of these sites that pay well, that can afford a home, that then can support those businesses, that would seem to be the starting point for me, getting that running, and then the rest would build around that.
So, Mr. Mayor, so if it's either, either/or, I mean, if that's the way we go with this, and I would support the Nell Scott Gap addition to the 23rd Industrial area and not this one, because-
Oh, well, the Nell Scott Gap is included in the 23rd Industrial.
Okay.
When I-
It is.
Yes. Yeah, when I call it mixed-use district, it's 23rd Street Industrial slash mixed-use, and that does include the Nell Scott Gap refinement plan, the green.
Okay, so this one's a full package, it's got the-
Nell Scott Gap, yeah.
Okay.
The purpose for doing this district would be to help implement that plan.
So in terms of your five potential areas, the thing to keep in context is, you now have 288 acres about that you can put into urban renewal. So this particular area right now is 307 acres. So over that, you wouldn't have to include all of those parcels-
Right.
-because you could just include the roadway where you're actually going to be doing the project, so you wouldn't have to include all of the separate parcels there. So you could get it down smaller, or you could take a look at your existing area, free up some acreage, include this whole area, and potentially a little more if you wanted to, if you felt like you needed to pull in some additional assessed value to add more increment, because the assessed estimated tax increment over a 25-year program, and I didn't do these estimates, but Ron Tierney did, who was quite good at what he did, was $10 million. That's not a lot of money. So if you wanted to try to develop an area that had more than that, you would need to take in some additional property that had assessed value to help provide more funding to get that maximum indebtedness, that increment number higher.
And that's kind of what you would look at if we all liked this plan, then you would do that?
Right, yes. Yeah, we're not forming a district tonight.
And the other areas could be considered in the future, once your existing area closes, or if you were able to take enough acreage out of that existing area that freed up additional acreage to look at another area. So it doesn't mean those other ones would never get considered, it just means you have potential now to do a district, which district you expect you to look at now.
However, though, if I could just continue, then after you do your magic with this and get the acreage down, then there is potential to do other areas.
Yeah, once the existing district is done, it will release all of that acreage and make it available if you wanted to do another district.
Okay. So-
So it's 670 acres in the existing?
Correct, approximately, yes.
You know, I can see, I mean, number one would be jobs for me, and so I lean towards the Nell Scott Southeast 23rd Industrial mixed-use district. But I'm not familiar enough with the benefits of a bypass on a neighborhood. You know, the only one I've really had a chance to look at semi-closes, the Dundee, and I don't have any information as to how that's impacted the businesses around it, and whether that's going to make it more livable, we're going to see more development of residential, you know, that's a pretty sweet alternative to have available. Can you fill me in on, historically, what does a bypass do for an area?
Well, as you know, Highway 101 is our Main Street, and there are different priorities and objectives for Oregon Department of Transportation as there are for the city. In terms of having a real pedestrian-friendly, active, Main Street sort of feel, pedestrian scale, we have, Urban Renewal has tried to focus on the off-highway parts of town, like on 15th Street and 51st Streets, which are our feature streets of those areas, and really try to foster more of a mixed-use, active business community on those streets. And we're doing that more now with our redevelopment sites. So it doesn't mean that there aren't businesses on Highway 101, it's just a different sort of a feel, having logging trucks, which are part of our Oregon economy and very important, but when you are trying to have a pedestrian-focused shopping area, and you have logging trucks going by, it just creates a different sort of feel. And so the idea of having the through traffic, like freight, go around town means that on the south half of Lincoln City, we would have an opportunity to create more of a traditional Main Street downtown sort of environment, assuming that we could build a road that would encourage the through traffic to stay out of the downtown, so to speak. So it's theoretically creating more of an opportunity for a Main Street in the south half of town.
And I'm not sure there have been any studies on the Dundee one yet, but I'm certain we could check, but I'm not sure that it's been in operation long enough for anybody to have said empirically, X has happened or Y has happened there.
Yeah, I haven't seen any more turnover than normal in businesses in that area as I drive through it, so I couldn't say whether, you know, the vineyard's doing as well or not, or, you know, is it, the concern I have is with the Main Street concept, is it seems to be heavily focused on mom-and-pop businesses, and not a lot of growth there for employment. And, you know, who lives here, who runs it, and what wages are coming from that. It's, I am a mom-and-pop, and I know that there's not a lot of room for advancement, there's not a lot of room for wage growth in these smaller retail and food, what am I trying to find, losing my mind here, service sector jobs, as opposed to the light industrial. And so, I love the idea, and especially because that whole south end, as I've said it 100 times, is it's just ripe for the transportation plan, we have a walking and biking, because it's the biggest flat area we have, and I'd love to see that continue to develop. But if I've got a choice, you know, when we have one-third of our housing stock sitting empty all year long, or for the most part of the year, gosh, the idea of bringing people here who will live here and can afford to be upwardly mobile in our town, I like that idea a lot better. How was that for a long-winded nothing burger?
It's a perfect long-winded nothing burger.
I'm still liking this, but I do see the value of this. But again, if I have to go one way or the other, I guess I lean towards, I lean towards the green. Thank you for color coding.
Yeah, that's good.
I'd love to hear more, yeah, please.
My concern is annexation. I see quite a large area on the green option that's outside of our urban growth boundary. So we'd have to annex urban growth boundary, and we'd also have to annex outside the urban growth boundary. What hurdles are there?
Yeah, so Elaine has more experience with this than I do. I will say, as part of the Nell Scott Gap refinement plan, there are a couple of different parcels that were identified as possibly doing what they call like a property swap. So our urban growth boundary would not change in size, it would just change in location, because there is a property that is in the urban growth boundary that isn't as developable as one that's just abutting it but outside. So that was a great thing to identify in that Nell Scott Gap plan, and I think that that would be a very logical way to deal with the urban growth boundary thing. And I understand also that at the state, they are understanding more about when an urban growth boundary could change, like, they seem to be more amenable to a change if it has to do with workforce housing, which is a serious need in many communities, pretty much all communities. And so if, it seems to me that there's more of a willingness to talk about how a UGB line should change and why. So, of course, I can't answer that. I wish, that'd be nice, to say I had an answer on if that would go or not, but that would be one of the things to address in that plan.
And have we had any communication with county commissioners about this?
No, not at this time. And Elaine has seen many districts that either do or do not annex.
So I've worked on a number of plans where the city has created an urban renewal area, and a portion of that urban renewal area is outside of the city limits. And if you proceed with that before it's annexed, the county has to give their approval to the urban renewal plan too. So the city, typically, the city can adopt an urban renewal plan on their own, but if there are properties that are unincorporated, the county also has to adopt that urban renewal plan, so you do have to work with them. And I think on these, because there hasn't been direction about which one you want to do, at the point that you decide you want to move forward with one, that's the time to go to the county and say, let's talk about what the issues are, and are you willing to work with us? I've had very good success with every county that we've worked with, except one, and it was kind of an odd issue. But on them acknowledging that those areas need to be annexed in the future, it makes sense for that to be developed, this is industrial land that most counties would want developed and within the city limits, so I don't, I don't see your county as saying they wouldn't be interested, because it makes all the right sense, it's for all of the right reasons to do that. So there are two ways to proceed on those, you can annex it all first, before you do an urban renewal area, or you can proceed with the county as your partner, saying, let's do this, and you can do your annexations in the future as you need to do them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And we have brought it up to the county in our joint meetings, especially when we finished the Nell Scott Gap plan, we shared that with them, and I specifically asked them if they would have any objection to annexation. And they could care less, because they get their money anyway. And they would love to have an urban renewal bring new revenue to their pockets. So they're set for any of that.
The UGB issue is, there's another little wrinkle there, and I've only done one urban renewal plan where we had properties that were outside of the urban growth boundary. And what we had to do to satisfy the comprehensive plan issue, because you have to say your urban renewal plan conforms to your comprehensive plan, is say that the city would not undertake any development activities outside of the UGB until it was brought into the UGB. So you aren't allowed to develop outside of your UGB, so you have to make that specific in the urban renewal plan.
Not with our existing district, we haven't done that.
Anyone have thoughts on any other districts, the Niotsu District?
My question is, where is water and sewer lacking in the Niotsu District?
Well, I don't have a lot of detail on that. I think in general, in the residential area near the lake, there's a lot of sewer lacking. I don't actually even know if there's, I think it's primarily septic. And then, I believe they're all on city water. But I'd want to double-check that before you quote me.
And everything would be contingent upon annexation?
Yes, or as Elaine mentioned, we wouldn't need to annex if the county approved the plan as is. So the annexation could happen before the district is formed, or after the district is formed, or maybe not even at all, depending on what agreements we would have with the county.
And there's not much in the Niotsu District that's outside of the UGB.
Right.
If you could walk me through, because the only, I've been through two annexations in my life, one was out in East County Portland, and I was a fairly young guy at that time, and just said, okay, I guess I got to do this. And the tail end of the Rhodes End project, and how contentious that was, how does that differ from what we're talking about here? County just has the full say on this? Okay.
On annexation, you have to follow, the county can say, we don't mind you creating an urban renewal area over property over which we have jurisdiction, because you as a city don't have jurisdiction over that. So that's all they get to say about. So on the actual annexation, you have to follow your annexation rules that are set out by Oregon statute on how you can annex or cannot annex. So that, that's a whole separate process and procedure that you as a city have to follow those guidelines. And I don't do annexation, so I don't know specifically what those are.
So, kind of a timeframe, how, I mean, that's a big question, but I couldn't possibly make a decision on this. I have no clue what I'm talking about. Is it a five-year process, 10-year process to get annexation happening?
Yeah, we could talk more about annexation, you know, and bring back information, I don't have any idea, I've never been through an annexation myself, so I'd have to-
Since this whole plan is contingent on that-
Uh-huh.
I don't need that information.
Well, the annexation is a big question. It's not only how quickly or slowly can it happen, I think it happens as slowly as you want it to, if at all. It might be that some parts of any of these districts you would want to annex, and some parts, maybe you don't have any interest in annexation. So that would be down the road after we get into feasibility about what is the county interested in, what are you interested in, where do the projects need to happen, and then what makes sense to come into the city sooner or later or not at all.
I would think you would mostly want it to come in so that you can apply your city tax rate to it, because if you don't annex it, your tax rate is a much lower tax rate that you would be getting to do projects that would benefit those properties. So if they're getting the benefit of projects that you do, you would probably want to annex.
Okay, so then, and help me again with the acreage, we have 433, how does that fit into what we were talking about before with-
433 for-
Estimated area, 433 acres in the Niotsu.
For Niotsu, yeah. So if you wanted to create a district in Niotsu, you would only have 288 acres of that 433 that you could actually form a district in.
That's completely separate from the other ones we were talking about.
Right now, if you wanted to form it now-
Right.
-without the existing district going away, you would only have 288 acres, and you would not have the opportunity to create any other districts until the existing district goes away. And then that frees up 670 acres.
Okay.
Or, as we talked about on the other one, if you were able to take properties out of your existing area that are tax exempt properties, that can boost up that 288. So if you're interested in that, then your GIS folks can work with Allison to figure out what are those properties and what is that potential, so that you would know how much extra acreage you would have. So in my mind, the way to make these decisions are, of these districts, which ones meet your goals that you as a city have? So are your goals job creation? Are your goals affordable housing? Are your goals single-family, bringing in single-family residential? What are your established goals? Is it economic development? And then saying, which one of these districts really meets our goals? And then, from that, say, okay, now we have to begin looking at the feasibility, how much acreage can we pull from the other one? What does the county say? What does annexation do? How long will it take? So that would be my decision-making matrix. I would look at these and say, one of these makes a lot more sense than the other, which one is it to you? And then from that, say, Allison, go ahead and take a look at this and answer all of these questions that we have about how we would proceed in a feasibility study, and come back to us, and then we can decide whether it makes sense to proceed or not.
Oh, please go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think-
I was just going to say, I think what I would need next would, that acreage that is, you know, tax-exempt. So, we know what acreage it is that we're talking about. And then, we could go to B, which would be, well, which ones could we remove that, from our district that we have now? If we need more, and how much would we end up with? It's hard to make a decision without knowing what number, you know, what acreage we're going toward, but...
Yes, and the acreages that are on here are very estimated. It's going to depend on which properties and projects you want in and out of each area. So, everything is very malleable at this point in time, very much estimated. So, if you have 288 acres, is there one district or two that you would prioritize over the others? Maybe eliminate a couple of the districts that you know would not meet as many of the council objectives as the others. And then, that would help narrow down, okay, with 288 acres, you know, and we're not, we can't cover, let's see, I think all of them are, so let's look at Nell Scott 23rd Industrial, which is 307, I think, is that the least amount of acreage?
Yeah.
So, 307 is the closest to 288. Could you get another 30 acres out of the existing district? And if that's the case, you would be theoretically spot-on with creating the Nell Scott 23rd Industrial Mixed Use. And, and you could say, "Let's look at the feasibility of that," and then you would have more information moving down the road. Now, again, as Elaine mentioned, that's how much you have now. And once the existing district goes away, you would have the opportunity to say, "Hey, we have freed-up acreage. Let's look at either adding some more area to our district we've formed, or let's look at another one of these options to meet some other objectives that you might have." So...
So, much of Niotsu, it's not a, it'll never get done. It's just, it's not going to, if we say no, it's not going to be done under urban renewals ages. We can still do LIDs, we can still put in sidewalks, we can still do all of these things, just not with that. So, I'm going to say, I'm good.
That's right.
We could still do it after the existing, but do we want...
That's correct.
Area is...
That's right.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, and urban, urban renewal is not your only economic development tool. As, as the mayor just mentioned, there's LIDs, there, there are other tools. It, urban renewal has the ability to move projects forward more quickly, usually, than other tools.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We haven't talked about the golden ride, when the Rhodes End Villages District. And I know that this doesn't include a list of projects or any of that kind of thing. I do, though, I, I would, I'm almost like to have a fallback if something happens where we can't do this. And so, I'm thinking about the Rhodes End Villages District, mostly in how, how much difference potentially there is to do something in the villages to help spur growth there. And then, also sidewalks or a pathway. I'm not on Logan Road, just because of the safety issue I witness every day, so. I mean, I, and I don't know how...
Yeah, so...
I don't know what all that would be, but...
There's another thing to consider, besides having it mesh with your city council objectives, is which area is most likely to redevelop soonest? Because if there is redevelopment that is being discussed, or you think is likely to happen, then that increment or increase in assessed value could be captured within an urban renewal area or not. If the development happens before an urban renewal area is created, then urban renewal would not have the opportunity to use that increased assessed value. It would go into the, what they call the frozen base. And Elaine knows more about that than I do, but, you know, that's kind of the essence of how urban renewal works. So, if there's one area over the other where we are thinking that redevelopment is going to happen, that might be a low-hanging fruit for creating an urban renewal district.
Then, why is Rhodes End in here? There's not, there's, sure, there's lots left available to build.
Yeah, because it's connected to the villages at Cascade Head property. Yeah, where we have identified commercial development, so...
Okay, thanks.
Are you looking for a consensus tonight?
That would be lovely. Consensus or direction, yeah.
I would like to know what non-taxable acreage we have that we might be able to take out of the existing urban renewal district.
Okay.
See what we have to work with.
Yeah, we, we did kind of a really high level, and, and we think that it's likely that we could get 30-ish acres. We definitely would want to take a concrete look at that, to have an exact accounting, but there is, there, there are some large parcels, and there, there is quite a bit of, I mean, City Hall is a great example. You know, we're sitting in a tax-exempt property, and City Hall, I don't know how many acres exactly it is, but, you know, that would feed into that calculation of properties that could come out of the district.
So, that would be a two-part analysis. You, you would need to look at that acreage, and then you would need to go back to whoever issued your bonds and have them check and make sure that they're okay with you, and they'll issue, they'll tell you informally, and then, before you can ever do it, they'll have to issue a formal opinion that it's okay for you to do that.
How many acres do we have with the police building, Ron? 19? 19 acres right there. Look at it, it's just happening right in front of us. Yeah, I, I go back to, something I said a while ago, is, "I think we've got plenty of tourists. We have plenty of visitors. We need more citizens." And in that vein, I, I still, I'm going to lean towards something that will create higher-paying jobs, bring larger employers in. I mean, I know it's light industrial, but it's better than two people, hopefully, and a higher wage that then will ripple throughout the city and build up and start filling in some of these homes that are sitting either vacant or being used as, as just a vacation home every once in a while. There's anything wrong with that? But it seems to me that if we continue to just work for the small stuff, like the, the south end, you know, the mom and pop and the, the places where people come visit, rather than, this is substantial to me. This is, this is where the meat is, and this is where I think we really grow from. And I'd like to see, the north end has so much density and, and what's the word developers use up there? Critical mass, that we're lacking in the south end. And I'd like to see something drawn to the south, that maybe then we can start talking about a larger grocery store, or a larger something coming down to the south end, but still maintain the character that we're looking for, that Main Street. So, I'm, I'm in favor of the Nell Scott Southeast 23rd Industrial Mixed Use District.
Me, too. I, I would also like an idea of what we could do with $10 million.
Closer to the mic, Ron, we want...
Spend it.
Yeah. What we could spend it on.
But I, I think that, Mr. Mayor, the question there might be an obvious one, is, and we encouch to expand that district to catch some already-existing assessed value in that area, so that we grow the $10 million faster and larger. And I, I think that gets back to the earlier question, how much other acreage can we, you know, extract from the existing district and go from there? And maybe eliminate in this Nell Scott area, not include in the district. So, I, I'm in favor of the 23rd to do a research on that one. And, you know, I don't know if you need a backup, but I, I would agree with Deanna that I think the business opportunity of the villages has merit, because it'd just be the business ask, business section, not the, the housing up there, that should take off anyway.
Well, and that's something that is always, and I don't know, because I'm, I'm not a builder, I don't know if it's even possible, but one thing that happened, discussed years ago when the city acquired this, was the ability to bring in the senior retirement village concept. And I don't know if that's possible in that area or not with the topography, but that would seem in an, an industry that would be beneficial to that area. As opposed to the vacationer, and these would be residents, of course, and the transitional living situations, which I would, this, I think would be great, which would benefit our hospital and its growth and all, but I don't know if that fits within this or not.
Well, I would just make the point, this circle is, or the intent, I don't think, is to include the entire villages.
Right.
Is, is just that kind of portion that gets zoned, kind of a...
Commercial.
More commercial, which, which would be, to your point.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. Because we don't know what it would be, it's just, I want to be in a position to assist and, and facilitate that kind of development, so...
Yeah, I just like the, the idea of a more long-term development of a business, rather than more stores. Rather than, again, stores, but...
But again, that, that to me would be a second, a B plan, not a, an A plan. The 23rd is still, for me.
You got kind of a, I know you haven't had much to say on this one. You good to go?
And, and I, I served on that committee for two years, and I know the enthusiasm of the community and the potential of investment interest for that area. I, I truly support the 23rd and Nell Scott, and I like the idea of the backup for the commercial area of the villages. So, I think that's something that's very valuable to us.
Is that enough info for you, then?
Is there, is there maybe a motion? Sounds kind of like there might have been a motion.
Well, there, I think there were some pieces missing that we wanted to hear. I mean, we wanted more about what acreage we could extract and all that, so I don't know.
But don't we have a choice of...
To, to direct staff?
Yeah.
Sure. Make that motion.
So, the motion would be to direct staff to explore under the guise of a new urban renew, urban, yeah, renewal district. Our 23rd, Southeast 23rd Street has a primary, and the Villages Business District as a secondary, two districts.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you. My mouth is open. I just want to say, maybe not within that motion, but also a direct staff to, to find that acreage, so we can maybe do both.
If I had my secondary choice, I'd go to F. Nell Scott, but...
Sorry.
That would be my secondary choice, but I think I'm going to lose on that argument.
The bypass is out, you're...
That would be my secondary over the villages, yeah. Anyway, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both for your time and efforts here.
So, this will be incremental steps as we go. We'll be bringing back more information and keeping you updated, so you can make decisions accordingly. Yeah.
Good.
So, again, Mr. Mayor, this, this stays in the city council?
Yes.
These are all city council decisions, so urban renewal, we won't hear from you on, on this.
That's right, yes.
Okay? I just got to keep it straight here. Okay.
We don't put our... Let me clarify. So, doing a feasibility study can be done with either one, so city council is fine. If you decide to go ahead with an urban renewal plan on one of these, the first step on the formal public review is the agency. So, it goes to the agency first, the agency then sends it to the planning commission for a county briefing and to city council. So, you can do all of this as a city council, but if you decide to move forward with a plan, it, it pulls back at some point to, when you have a draft plan, it goes to the agency first.
Okay. Anything else for the good group?
And, Mr. Mayor, I just hate to throw this out, but this is not quick process, saying within a year, forming a district.
Yeah.
So, you know, when I was reading this, so...
Right.
I guess, when does a council lock down the decisions? I'm only getting to, because we're faced with an election in November, of which there'll be, you know, three, potentially four new people, and we're in the midst of moving this stuff forward. So, locking a new district down isn't going to be done in 2018. So, so is it money wasted on a feasibility study of 23rd Street, hypothetically, come February of 2019, when a different council reassesses?
You want?
Yes.
I'll jump in on that. I, I think if you looked at decisions from that perspective, maybe you would never move ahead on anything. So, in my mind, the city council who's acting makes decisions and moves forward with the body of knowledge that they have, because you're elected to do activity from now till X. So, that's my, as a implementer, as a political person, you know, you, you may have totally different input on that.
Well, I do, because you're the guy that I'm probably going to be paying $35,000 to, so I'm not surprised at that. So, my, my question, and I'm being sarcastic, sorry, is it a two-year process? You know, could, so in, in thinking, a, a new board, new council comes on, and you're going to have stability for two years?
You could do that. I, I'm working with a couple of cities right now who all ask the same question, right? And one city has decided to wait until after the election. Another city has said, "No, let's, let's move ahead." And the feasibility part is not a $35,000 effort, you know, it's a smaller effort. That, you know, maybe that's lost if you move forward, but typically, when a new council comes in, I mean, unless, I mean, I don't see a bunch of people here saying what you're doing is wrong. So, if there was a lot of controversy in your city, or the political climate was really charged, then maybe you say, "Well, let's hold off." If you think things are going well, and things will probably continue to go that way, then you move ahead. The, the city that's decided to hold off is bend. They're a little more politically charged and are fearful that things will change dramatically, so they said, "Well, let's just wait." And, and worst-case scenario, I worked with the city of Lake Oswego on an urban renewal plan, it was probably the best one I've ever written. It was adopted in October. There was election in November. It was rescinded in January. It, it broke my heart, because it's probably the, really the best thought-out plan and new development that, that could have happened. It was my own city, my own community, so I was really invested in it. So, yes, that, that kind of thing can happen, and I guess you just have to know politically how your community is rolling right now, and whether it's wasted money or not.
And you also have to consider, this is, this is long-range. So, how many councils have we had since 1988 with our existing district? So, we had, we had a council who formed the district, and then we've had, you know, 30, we'll end up having 32, I think, years of projects across the life of that district and, and that... have we had since 1988 with our existing district? So we had, we had a council who formed the district, and then we've had, you know, 30, we'll end up having 32, I think, years of projects across the life of that district, and, and that political change has happened, so...
Yeah, my, my only concern is, you know, with four options on the table, that, you know, an option might change. You know, because, yeah, once, once a district is formed, and funded, and, you know, moving, because the projects within that may change, as it did in our first one, all over the place, but...
Yeah, and, and who knows who will be seated in the year 2020, 2020, when this district, we're thinking that it's going to be paid off and sunset, and there is an opportunity for another discussion about forming a second, or maybe even third, area. So yes, this is...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, the interesting part that I just want to jump in on with what Allison just mentioned, is that the number of districts that you want to form is only limited by the percentage of your, of your city's size. You can only do up to a certain percentage. And so if you've identified two, and a new council comes in and says, oh, we don't want this second one, we want to add another one, that doesn't mean the possibility of the second one goes away. Because as our current district ends, and that's going to open up more possibilities for other districts. So it's, it's not as though the possibilities will end, depending on what a new council does.
Thank you.
Just one more question I thought of. As, as these acreages were determined, that took into account the annexation, right?
The acreages on each of the proposed areas?
As, if we annex, yes, some of these areas, that would increase our acreage.
That's correct. And the calculation that I made is on your existing acreage. So it'll give you a little bit more.
Yeah.
And you could certainly look at that when you're looking at the overall acreage number, too.
Okay.
Saying, okay, what happens if we annex that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ron, thank you for helping out today. If there's nothing else, we'll go to the order. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Allison. Thanks for coming over.
Mics are off.